We're losing too many women. Stop the violence against women. We need to love our women and take care of the women. Stop abusing the women. We're losing too many women, yeah. Stop the violence against women. We need to love our women, take care of the women. Stop abusing the women.
Welcome back to this live town meeting coming to you on JCN, on University Drive here in Nassau, the Bahamas. And we are here with Zonta, and we are promoting the No Campaign Against Violence in the Bahamas. Dr. Adley Smith.
Yes, we just heard from Pastor Scavalla, who told us that we need to learn to resolve conflicts peacefully. And we as Zontians, we have partnered with a number of like-minded organizations. One is the Crisis Center. And if anybody out there is experiencing any type of need, we want them to contact the Crisis Center. The number is 328-0922. Once again, that number is 328-0922. Now, coming up next is Tina Gay Foster. Tina Gay Foster is going to tell her story. She is a finalist nursing student. And from the age of eight, she had decided that no matter what, she wanted to be a nurse. And through hard work, she focused on commitment and excellence to achieve her goals. Tina Gay has conquered many challenges. And she's here tonight to tell us that she is the unfinished diamond. Please give Tina a hand.
Thank you very much, Dr. Adley Smith. Good evening to all my fellow Zontian sisters, my fellow panel members, family, friends, and good evening Bahamas. I extend a heartfelt greeting to all of you. And tonight is the night I stand with every woman out there against violence, against pain, against suffering. Tonight is the night I break the silence and say no to violence against women and girls. A diamond, the ancient Greeks named the diamond Atomus, meaning invincible, indestructible, proper, untaamed. A diamond is the most famed and fabled of all gemstones. It is very unique in many ways. Renowned for being the hardest substance on earth. It is sparkling fire, durability, and the rarity makes the diamond the most prized of all gems. No gemstone contains as much allure and interest as does a diamond. It is unique, and it is hard and can endure anything. It lends the ability to withstand daily wear and tear beyond capabilities of most gemstones. Ladies and gentlemen, I am now an unfinished diamond. On February 14, 2013, I met death. I met death, and I looked him dead in the face for three years of my life. I almost married death. And despite the physical, verbal, emotional, and sometimes sexual abuse I faced, I still stayed in a relationship, thinking I could have fought, and I could have won. Or even that I could have changed death's face. But ladies out there who are in this situation, I am here to tell you, get out now because you can't change him. Get out. Two simple, three-letter words, easy to utter, but so difficult to do. Here are some reasons why it's difficult for us to get out. We are ashamed. I planned the wedding, was ready to walk down the aisle. I know some of you are in the same position. You don't want to start over. You feel as though three years is such a long time. You've given your all, all your effort, your hard work, your finances to this person. And now, how can you turn your back? You have probably been there before. You've probably been in prior relationships where you experienced the pain. And you thought, hey, this one might be different. And here you are again. Your families, your friends have now turned their back on you because they felt like you keep making the same decisions. You are afraid, no one to turn to. You're being threatened on a daily basis. Oh, if you leave, I'll do this. If you leave, I'll kill you, I'll hurt you. Or you feel as though you can't make it without the person. Maybe they're handling your finances. Or you're in nursing school like me, and you feel as though he's going to help me with the kids. So I can't go, who's going to help me if he goes? Listen, ladies, I had all of these excuses. Despite what my mom, my friends, my church family, and everyone else around me said, I didn't listen. I didn't listen because I felt they couldn't tell me what to do. They didn't understand what I was going through. But guess what? I am someone who has been through and can now tell you to move and get out before it's too late. I tried several times to get out. I filed four boundovers and never went to court. I called the police approximately nine times and still took him back. I began to pray to God to move him. But every time he left, he called and said, I love you. I'm sorry, I let him back in. It's going to come a time when you're going to realize to stop making excuses for people because before it's too late. You see, from the first punch in my abdomen, eight months into the relationship, I got a sign, but I didn't get out. Or two months later, when he slapped me in the face and left a handprint, that was another sign. Then it went from bad to worse. Calling me names like fat this, worthless this, dirty, stupid, locking me in the room, headbutt, spitting at me, calling me garbage, grabbing anything. When I got free and would run outside, he would come after me. At one point, he even tore my clothes off in the street. The neighbors watched. I guess they felt I deserved it because I didn't get rid of this man for three years. They were used to it. When my eyes started to open was when my 12-year-old son got involved. He attempt, when the gentleman attempted to drag me with his car, my son came and took a hit at him. And he swung back at my son. My son ducked, and I screamed. When your kids get involved, time is up, get out. I made up my mind that I was leaving. I filed the boundover for real this time. I prayed to God, and I listened. I stood up for myself and my kids. I recognized my worth. He kept trying to get back in, and I kept locking him out. The last straw. After keeping him blocked out for two months, he tried me. He walked back in my house, straight in my room, and locked the door. I saw death. He started complaining, why are you doing this to me? Don't you love me? I was afraid. He then, with all his might, gave me a headbutt. I instantly felt my head swelling. I started to scream, I need ice. I felt my head swinging. I prayed inside, God, please don't let me die. I laid back. Then I thought, how am I going to get out? I began to beg him. Please, let me go and take a bath, I have to go to work. I had to say, baby, please. He got up, he watched me bathe to ensure that I didn't use the phone. He walked me to the car, which he had blocked in. I had to kiss him goodbye with a swelling on my head. He followed my car to make sure I didn't go to the station. And when he disappeared, with my mind made up, I went straight to the police. It was over, I chose to live and not die. Women and girls out there, let us choose to live and not die. I am here to help. Your first step to overcome is that you have to make the choice, that you are worth it. You have to make the choice to get out. Trust God, pray. Then there's counseling, that's important. Seek your church, the Women's Crisis Center, the Zonta Club, or wherever you feel comfortable. Restraining orders, file that boundover and make it stick. Make the police aware of him. Make the communities aware of him. I didn't have to move away, but in some cases, persons have to move away. Encourage yourself. If you have kids, make them your reason to fight if you don't want to fight for you. Always remember, a diamond is immune to scratching. As the only thing that can scratch a diamond is another diamond. Don't let someone hurt you who don't value you because you are valuable. Diamonds are difficult to polish due to their hardness. They can only be polished with special diamond saws that has a thin layer of diamond on the edge. Once diamonds are formed in the diamond stability zone, they must find their way to the surface of the earth to be mined. This occurs through violent volcanic eruptions from deep under the earth's crust. A diamond, once it allows itself to be found, is raw material but priceless as it goes through processing, polishing, shaping before the world can see it. I am still processing, still persevering, still pressing, still perfecting, and still praying to fulfill my dreams. You can do it too. I am now a finalist nurse on my way to graduate May 2018 BSN to RN. I am in the process of writing my book. My dreams are up ahead, and I didn't let him stop it. I will continue to help all young women by giving them a voice. You are not stuck. A diamond is never stuck, but it pushes through the earth and rises to the top. Ladies and gentlemen, I stand before you a survivor, a lady, a queen, an unfinished diamond. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Tina Gay, for sharing that story. You are not alone. Statistics shows that one in three women and one in seven men or boys report sexual violence in their lifetime. Coming up next is Donna Nichols. Our theme for Zonta this year is Leave No One Behind and Violence Against Women and Girls. And Donna is dedicated in empowering vulnerable groups, especially women and girls who are survivors of sexual and domestic violence. She is a veteran counselor, a community leader, a fierce advocate for human rights. Please welcome Donna Nichols.
Good night, and thank you for having me here. Tina Gay, you made my job very easy because I speak on behalf of victims. And I think through my presentation, your presentation will make my presentation so real because sometimes when I'm talking about these things, a lot of people see it as abstract. But this and Tina Gay's story is the story of a lot of women every single day in their lives. So thank you for the courage, and thank you for making my presentation a lot easier. I thank the Zontians because every year, at least for the 16 days, we have highlights of the violence against women. But of course, from the Crisis Center's perspective, it's a 365-day-a-year campaign to stand for women and girls who are being abused. So today was really good because the conversation tonight is really aimed at engaging everybody, not just in the conversation, but in the action plan that goes from this. And the conversation tonight is not to make anybody comfortable. We're not going to be comfortable with this. It's really about what can I do at the end of this? How can I play a part in this? Of course, we heard about the historical context. I don't have to go through that. That abuse of women is rooted in patriarchy and social acceptance. And that's something that we have to talk about. And they're all forms of abuse, as we spoke about today. It could be sexual, physical, economic, financial, verbal, and all the rest, okay? Now, abuse, we have to understand, is purposeful manipulation. Now, you know, it's like to be deflected. It's because of this, and it's because of that. Abuse is purposeful manipulation in order to exert power and control over a woman or another, okay? We have to remember this, we always. And I want us to make sure that we understand the context in which these things happen and not get caught up in the drama that people want to use to deflect from it and what it is exactly, okay? It is a chosen behavior. It's a learned behavior. And so if it's a learned behavior, it can be unlearned. So somebody who is an abuser can get help. But it's that person will have to decide and face up to it and say, this is what I am. And we have to call it out, and we have to let the person know that the behavior is unacceptable, but there is help. So the antidote, I say, to toxic abusive relationships is healthy relationships. So at the end of the presentation, the short presentation, we will talk about healthy. But there are some things that happen that get us into these relationships that we walk in and are not even understanding that these are really things that, and we call them the red flags, and we talk about these kinds of things that we really have to pay attention. And one of them is somebody who is extremely jealous and possessive. And there are lots of time, women and men, will boast about this. Oh, my husband, my wife, my this, my that. Oh, they didn't know where I'm every minute of the day and night and who I'm talking to and all of that. And just saying that I have to take a deep breath because that's so smothering. So anybody who is extremely jealous and possessive, and I say that's a sick person, but not disrespectfully. I'm saying it in a way that that's somebody who does need help. And at the end, I'll say that we're very lucky that we have lots of agencies and persons who can help in our country. Somebody who ignores and disregards your boundaries. You know, we have things, we have our own personal non-negotiables and negotiables. These things will not happen. You speak to me this way, you do not speak to me this way. This is not acceptable, that is not acceptable. But somebody comes in your life and say, well, no, no, no. I didn't know, you know, what you want or you feel. They're saying, no, 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 that this is how it's going to go now. No, we do it this way, and so on. So somebody who is not allowing you to blossom and flower in your fullness is somebody that you have to be very careful and wary about, okay? Somebody who is uncomfortable around your family and friends. And this is vital because one of the roles of an abuser is isolation. And so when you're isolated and you want to go and talk to somebody and say, this is happening. You know, long ago, and they don't say it anymore. Everybody, my children especially laugh when they say, the cheese stands alone. We used to talk about that, but they don't do that anymore. But you know, when you're the cheese that stands alone, there's nobody around you because you have been isolated. Why you have to go by your mother? Why you have to talk to those friends? Who is that you're talking to? And so this whole sense of fear and so on comes up in you. And I'm just talking about my top five or six, I think I have six here, that I just want us to, and because we have an audience, a broader audience, to be mindful of. The other one is somebody who lies to manipulate you. Somebody who is in front of you telling a blatant lie. I wasn't there, I didn't do. And you're thinking, and you know, you begin to doubt yourself. Because remember, what happens when you're in an abusive relationship? Your whole sense of you is diminished. And after a while, you don't even know who you are because you really do not exist. And you know, when you talk to people over the years who have been in abusive relationships, this is some of the language they use. And so this is some of the language we use in our advocacy because they said, I just didn't feel like a person anymore. I didn't know who I was, I ceased to exist, okay? And then sometimes, as we know, you actually cease to exist physically because you're murdered. Somebody who always blames somebody else for their problems. This is a huge thing because it means that you're not taking personal responsibility for anything. And eventually, all the blame is going to come on the victim. It's because of you that. And you know, this is something that I want us to really think about because this is another way that we buy in. And this is a way that we enable an abuser because we will believe it. Oh, yes, it's not that person's problem, or it's not that. Own up to it, it is your problem, and take responsibility for it. And the last one, last of many, but I'm just highlighting this for the short time, is somebody who is fixed, has rigid and fixed gender roles. Women must, and men must. Take a breath on that one too, because that's smothering. Why? You know, we have these fixed gender roles that we really have to. And a part of this, you know, I talk about this all the time, disrupt. We have to disrupt the national narrative that enables this conflict to happen instead of changing it. Now, quickly, I just want to talk about the cycle of violence because this happens for families. This happens sometimes for our law enforcement agencies. They get frustrated, this happens in workplace and so on. The U.S. statistic says that a woman may leave seven times and come back before. And as Tina Gay says, she tried to leave many times, okay? Women do not want the relationship to end. When you're emotionally detached to somebody, it's very difficult to get out. You need cognitive help, which is a very long process. And so you're emotionally detached to somebody. You don't want the relationship to end, but you want the abuse to stop. But you have no control of that. The abuse will stop when the abuser understands and admits that he's an abuser and will get long-term treatment. So it's not just a pie in the sky thing. You know, I went to counseling once, or I spoke to somebody. It's not that. There's a long-term treatment program for somebody to change that behavior. So in that cycle of violence, real quickly, there is the buildup stage, there's the action stage, and then the honeymoon stage. When you meet a lady in any one of those stages, she is a completely different person. You're meeting three people. And this is not somebody who has split personality. This is just somebody who is being wooed into these three areas. So at first, there's a lot of anxiety. And when the actual physical or real demeaning things or sexual violence happens, the person is just stunned and lost and so on. And then there's the honeymoon period. So when you meet somebody in a honeymoon period, you're thinking, that's when you get flowers, I'll never do it again. You get trips, you get, you know, everybody's so happy. I'm going to counseling, we're going to church, I'm going to church. All of this. But this is what the person wants to hear because, like I said, they want this relationship. So they're thinking, no, let me give it another chance. Let me give it another chance. But you know, unless the person admits that this is what is happening, those chances are going to go. And you know, the period between the buildup and the violence and the honeymoon period shortens. And sometimes it goes straight from violence to honeymoon, and then violence to honeymoon. So we have to understand that, and we really have to see what happens in the lives of many people. Okay. And then we have to also think about, I just want to stick in about marginalized women. The theme this year is inclusive. So if a woman who has no physical or mental health challenge or anything goes through violence, can you imagine if there's a woman who has a physical disability, who is a migrant woman, who speaks another language, a woman who is in the family islands where we have little or no support systems? So there's another layer. So I was so happy about the theme this year because it makes us have to remember that it's more women than we may encounter every single day. And it's inclusive. We have to think about the different layers that can happen to other women who may have more needs. Now, there are challenges, okay? And I just have to pick out these. Law enforcement and other state agencies that themselves become abusers. We have to talk about this, and we have to open up this conversation, okay? Cover-up in religious organizations, that's a huge. I'm just saying, these challenges, these are conversations that we have got to have, honest and open conversation. Not condemning, we're not condemning anybody. We need everybody. But we're saying that these things exist, and we have to have really factual, I mean, conversations about that. Civic groups and civil society groups that are just, that's just apathetic. They, well, you know, we really don't care. So, you know, but you have to care because it's affecting everybody. Private sector, that turns a blind eye. And then, and I just had to say this, but we talked about this, the lack of shelter facilities and long-term support. Because when we're talking about challenges, we have to throw that in. And long-term support, social services does as best they can. They give a two weeks here, they give a, sometimes even a three month. But what happens when you're talking about helping somebody to change? It needs to be like two years because the first six months, somebody just to know, I have a safe space, I'm getting counseling, and my children are safe. The next six months, you intensify the counseling, and perhaps the person can begin to get a job. And then the next year, they start to reintegrate in society, maybe able to save something to the first and last month. So those are things that we really have to think about. How can we really help if we're going to transform our community? So the outcomes that I want us to go away from tonight are, believe that violence against women is a real problem and needs all of us to participate, all hands on deck. Healthy relationships are possible and achievable. Conversations about healthy relationships include deconstruction of dysfunctional social norms and reconstruction of equality-based healthy norms. It's like a lot, but it says it all. I couldn't, I don't know how to say it simpler, okay? We're going to deconstruct the dysfunctional narrative, let's put it that way. And then we're going to reconstruct that with healthy, equality-based, healthy norms. And that really is the big challenge, and that's what we want to do. Healthy relationships, mutual respect, honesty, trust, shared decision-making, kindness, shared activities, good communication and listening. And my favorite word is freedom. If you don't have freedom in a relationship, it cannot be healthy, okay? And then I would suggest that we drop the judgment and find out, how can we help? How can I help you now? In what way am I able to assist right now? And you need to become educated about violence against women and be prepared to disrupt immediately the unhealthy national narrative. So just in conclusion, I just wanted to do a little, quick little thing with me. And so we said, who is an abuser? Just hold up your hand and pretend it's a mirror. And then look to your left, look to your right, and look in front of you, and look behind you. Who is a victim? Look in the mirror, look to your left, look to the right, look behind you, and look in front of you. Who is affected? Look in the mirror, look to your left, look to the right, look behind you, and look in front of you. And who can do something about it? Who needs to be involved? Look in the mirror, look to your left, look to your right, look behind, and look in front of you. I thank you.
Thank you so very much. Just in case you have just tuned in, this is a live town meeting sponsored by Zonta. And we are saying no to violence across the board in our country. Our next presenter is a former superintendent of police, Elaine Sands. She is a certified domestic violence intervention and prevention trainer. And during her tenure on the police force, she spearheaded a number of initiatives throughout the Bahamas. And in 2013, she served on the National Task Force for Gender-Based Violence. Ladies and gentlemen, Elaine Sands.
You know, because the police play a vital role in stopping violence in the community. And so I am here to encourage all of you, all of us. I'm here to encourage all of us to support the police in their endeavors to prevent criminal activities out there in the community. According to the United Nations and World Health Organization Global Status Report, violence is a universal challenge. Since 2000, about 6 million people killed in acts of interpersonal violence, making homicide a more frequent cause of death than all the wars during that period. So we can see that domestic violence, gender-based violence, whatever we call it, it's a serious problem, okay? It knows no boundaries, and anyone can be a victim. Domestic violence- Domestic violence cripples and destroys the concept of a loving and nurturing environment. It's a crime which tends to repeat itself, leads to other crimes and turns child abusers into adult victims and abuses themselves. And you heard all the panelists they spoke about, the children being affected. Because when violence is committed in a home, the children are there, they're watching the violence, okay? When a child has no one else to compare his or her parents' behavior against, the parent's behavior becomes normal to the child, okay? And we can see it being spelt out with the violence we experience in the schools. You know, we have a lot of children who take their behavior, their bad behaviors that they experience in their communities, they take it into the schools, okay? Violence knows no boundary. Domestic violence, pastors in the churches, they need to be able to recognize if somebody in the church is experiencing domestic violence. Also, it rolls over into the workplace. I had an opportunity a couple of years ago to walk through a workplace where a murder occurred. I'll say it was double murders and one suicide, okay? And as I walked through that scene and I saw there were three persons lying dead, and I started to think to myself, this crime scene will affect everyone, okay? And why I say everyone is because you had a young lady who was murdered by this perpetrator. She was a victim of domestic violence. And also the gentleman who was working in there, there were two of them worked in the business place, okay? And I believe that one was accusing the other one of going with his girlfriend. And he came to work that morning. Persons in the area saw him with a firearm, never called the police, okay? Never called the police until after the shooting because they thought it was just a normal day in the workplace, okay? So I just want you all to know that violence affects all of us. Because when a victim is murdered and when the perpetrator goes to prison, who have to take care of these children who are left behind? Social services, if social services have to take care of them, it means that we, the citizens of this country, we pay taxes, all right? And so our taxes is going to assist in taking care of the perpetrator, taking care of the children that are left behind and so forth. So domestic violence affects us directly and indirectly. A permissive or casual attitude towards domestic violence by anyone in society or the justice system helps to undermine integrity and stability of the family unit, okay? So it's important for us to work closely with victims of domestic violence. You know, sometimes we can see that, we can see what is going on with these victims. We can see when they come into the workplace, all right? We can be able to identify that something is going on in their life, all right? Sometimes it's hot and they're wearing long sleeves. Sometimes they're wearing turtleneck, trying to hide the scars, you know, from being battered and bruised. We can see them wearing dark shades. You know, we can see that something is going on. They're not showing up to work in a timely fashion, okay? In a lot of cases, sometimes they are absent from duty. Are we calling them to find out what is going on? Does the person who is in charge of the business, do they know who to call? Do they know that there's now a Protection Order Act, okay? And I want all of you to find chapter 99A. It's online, Bahamas Laws. And you need to go through that Protection Order Act. That Protection Order Act came into being in 2008, okay? And so it now has a definition. Domestic violence is now defined in the Protection Order Act. It covers stalking, it covers harassment, it covers financial abuse, it covers physical abuse, it covers sexual abuse, okay? And so when a victim goes to the court and make a complaint or try, or take an order on the perpetrator, it is the duty of the magistrate to adhere to that order within two to three days after the summons is served on the perpetrator. So they will deal with it as quickly as they can, okay? And when an order is put in place, that order is to be sent to the commissioner of police. So the clerk of the court is supposed to send that order directly to the commissioner of police. So the commissioner of police can inform all of his senior officers to various divisions that there is a protection order in place for this particular victim. And so that they will be on the alert for anything that happens to that victim and they will be able to respond, okay? The police's role is specifically spelt out in the Protection Order. Not the Protection Order, in the laws, okay? The Domestic Violence Protection Order Act, the police's role is spelt out. Social services' role is spelt out. So if you go to that act, it would be able to tell you exactly what the police is supposed to do. And we know that the police's role is determined by the nature of the dispute and the attitudes of the parties. When they respond to, when they respond to a scene, it is determined by what is happening at that scene. Who's the primary aggressor, okay? Who is injured? And the police job is to make sure, seek help for that person, make sure that that person reaches a safe place or gets to the hospital and so forth, okay? So the police has a major role to play in domestic violence, okay? Where we want to reach in our relationships? We want to reach the equality wheel. A wheel of non-threatening behavior, a wheel of respect, a wheel of trust and support, a wheel of negotiation and fairness, a wheel of economic partnership, shared responsibility and a wheel of responsible parenting. And I think if we can do that, we will have a better society, okay? So I want you to continue to work closely with the police because it's a tedious task, okay? You have to put a lot of man-hours into dealing with domestic violence, okay? I worked in the unit for a while and I know that you have to take up a lot of time, not only with the victim, I used to take up a lot of time with the perpetrators to minimize the violence, okay? And so I not only seek help for the victim, I seek help for the perpetrators. And so I want us to continue to do that so we can have a safer society. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you very much. For your presentation. And ladies and gentlemen, our final speaker for this evening is Dr. Gustavo Mary, who is an advisor, healthcare systems and services of the Pan American Health Organization, World Health Organization. He is a senior healthcare scientist and consultant with extensive experience internationally in healthcare services and systems. He has a very long resume. Ladies and gentlemen, Dr. Mary, give him a round of applause.
Good evening, everyone. I hope that you can hear me well. Thank you, Mr. Jones. And thanks to Zonta for having the opportunity of being here and for inviting me and including our organization, the Pan American Health Organization, in activities these days. I think that we have here so many different perspectives, so many things that it's hard to find a point to add something that hasn't been said. So I'm probably gonna repeat things that have been said already. But we know that the problems of violence against women, intimate partners, sexual violence and all the other forms of violence against women are so widespread in society, takes so many different forms. We see them so often. Some of them, we have even got desensitized to them. It's a big, big problem and we need to do something as a society. A complete society, we have to change that, something like that. When we think about what we have said, global statistics about one every three women being victims of this situation, that's, if we think about that, that's huge, you know? We think about how many women are a victim here today in this room, you know? At work, at home, and when we're in the streets, one every three is a victim. But we can be indifferent to something like that. But not only that, let's now think about that family, about the children that are around that woman, about the person who is the perpetrator of that violence, who has a problem, you know? And has a problem. It doesn't have, it doesn't bring happiness to his life to be violent with their partner, you know? So we see that this is a problem that it's affecting way beyond the huge proportion of the population than we see, we say one-third. It's affecting all of us and we're seeing that. We talk a lot about the level of violence that we see in the country. For example, in murders every day in the news or other types of big, big problems that make it to the news. And we talk about it. But we don't talk so much about the situations of violence against women. And many times, this is what it's building, what it's giving the fuel for that circle of violence that ended up in the news with major problems that we're seeing there, you know? So we have to work towards understanding all the causes and where the violence is coming and trying to change as a society and try to break that circle of violence that we've been talking about. And that it's everywhere. I'm not Bahamian. I have been for a short period of time, over a year in this country. It's very, it gives a lot of hope to see so much activity, so many people talking and wanting to produce a change in this situation. We know that there is a big problem. But this has to go beyond this room, beyond the events that we're hosting. It has to touch everyone. And everyone of us needs to think, what is my role? What am I doing, what am I not doing to end situations of violence around us? I represent the Pan American Health Organization, the World Health Organization. We know that this is not a problem. It's a problem that it's global, it's happening everywhere and we need to do something. The Pan American Health Organization, the 38 members of the organization signed recently a planning strategy for a regional action to end violence against women. This is the first region in the world that is addressing together, all together, the problem of violence. And there are essentially four areas where we are focusing our work. And I want to briefly mention them. One, it's strengthening the availability in the use of evidence to address violence. We need, we, people don't denounce situations, don't reach out for help. We need to know the level of the dimension of the problem, the characteristic of the problems, where it's happening, but also what is effective into changing people's behavior and helping victims of violence. We need to use that evidence and we want to work on that. The second area is strengthening the political and financial and also legal commitment to end violence against women. We can talk about people and say, don't do it. But we also need to support that economically. We need a legal framework that help end the situations and also, but I think particularly to allow us to ask to defend and support the women that are being victims. The other area is strengthening our services, our health service, our social services in order to be able to provide support and to help healing those that are victims of violence. And also strengthening in their capacity to prevent the situation that happening. So aside the areas that we are working, that we are trying to bring support to the countries, and all countries, sometimes we think that these problems are somewhere else, are not here, are not part of my neighborhood, are not part of my everyday life. Violence against women is everywhere and we all have a role to play. But we were listening Mrs. Nichols saying something that is very important. Change can happen, we can change. Somebody, a man who is violent can change, we need to support them. But that change can happen, you know? Change can happen also in the victims. We're hearing Tina Gay talking how as a victim to change, face the problem, change that situation, broke that circle of violence. So we know, we have seen, and we see all the time, that that change can happen. But we have to encourage everyone to take their own role. I can say, well, I'm not a violent husband, I'm not doing A, B, and C. But sometimes we have to understand what is the role that we can have. We can have to, we need to end sexual harassment in the street or harassment in general to women in the street. That's something that it happens everywhere in front of our eyes. We have to be understanding and supportive of those persons who we have seen that are victims and not try to point at them or try to isolate them. We need to have a social inclusion of victims in order to encourage them to reach out for help. There are so many things that we can do. And I think that we have to understand that role. And also, we have to be able to put in place mechanisms to help those victims. It's not only about reaching out for help. We have to be able to respond and to provide help to them. So that's all what I wanted to add.
Thank you so very much. This is a live town meeting coming to you from JCN here in our studios on University Drive. We take this final break on our program. And when we return, we are going to have some questions for this distinguished panel. And we hope that you in the audience here this evening will go to the microphone there and you would ask as many questions as you want. We have a short time to be here, however. So we take this final break and we'll come right back.